Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
We're live. We're live. We're ready to go. Good evening. We're gonna go ahead and open tonight. Mr. Wilson's gonna lead us in the pledge. And Mr. (inaudible). I'm so sorry. Mr. Hyatt will lead us in the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all your blessings. Lord, be your will. We ask that you bless our staff here at Swain County Schools. We will continue to seek your wisdom, courage, and strength through these difficult times. Lord, please help us to be wise in the decisions we make here tonight. Please help us to make decisions that are for the good of all involved. Dear Lord, let us always seek your will in all that we do and say. We ask these things in your name.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order.
Ms. Burns, Joanne should have passed out some additional personnel recommendations to you. Those are not on the original agenda because almost all of those came through this afternoon. Mr. Dills and his crew has been working pretty hard, which is not unusual. That's the first compliment I've ever given you. To help us get those positions that have been approved by the commissioners. So those are the names that you're gonna be looking at tonight. Other than that, that is all that I know that we need to add.
Okay, so do I have a motion for us to add the personnel names onto our agenda?
Come on in.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
Normally, at the beginning of the school year, we are able to have a convocation with all of our staff. And some of the things that we do are to announce the Swain County Teacher of the Year. This year, that's Heather Heron. And as soon as we can, we'll bring her in and let y'all pat her on the back just a little bit. And some of the other special awards that we give. But one of the awards that we have been giving every year is the Friend of Education. And this year, because of some of the things that the school system has been through, we were unable to just pick one. We've picked several. And so I would like for my friends from Skywave to come to the front. And we want to thank you for all that you've done for us. Skywave, whenever we had to go...
Sorry?
Whenever we had to go... I'm gonna call it go dark as a special education system. Whenever we had to shut down, Skywave came to our rescue in a lot of ways. And they enabled us to have hotspots and areas for students to go to, and they continue to support us. So we want to say thank you to both of you for all of the hours, because I know the hours that you work. And we want to present this to you as a friend of our school system. We're not supposed to touch, but I'm going to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for everything that you all are doing.
Let's have our friends from Zito Media come on. Now, that's the way that I pronounce it. If I'm pronouncing it wrong, you need... Somebody needs to tell me.
Zito.
Zito. See, I've been saying it that way. And I'm gonna blame my pronunciation on Karen Cook because she's not here. These are our representatives from Zito Media. They are our local provider through cable. A lot of people don't realize that whenever we talk about broadband, there is a very limited number of providers for true broadband. And Zito is one of those. And whenever we needed them back in the spring, they were quick to come to the rescue as well, and they have been helpers. And so we would like to say to all of you and to your company, thank you for being a friend of Swain County education. We appreciate you so much, and we'll be calling on you again.
I appreciate it.
Is there anything that you would like to say tonight?
No, we appreciate the awards from y'all. We're gonna be doing a lot more advances here. We're running fiber here from Atlanta all the way here. So probably gonna get like a fiber system here to make the system a lot better. Internet, a one gig system.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Did he wanna get a picture? Do you wanna get a picture?
I'll give him a photo. I saw you.
I want to get one.
Here, let's... Yeah.
Here, I'll just...
Here, will that Mr. Verl take your picture? That way you can all be in it. And we need to get... We need to get your picture too.
The question is, how do you know if it's possible?
Your eyes are supposed to be up here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Clearly, we need to get the other guys.
Yeah. And we need to get a picture where this... Our Skywave guy.
How do you feel, often, in the same thing? I'm sure that my...
Sorry. This is the best picture ever. They're not gonna see my face.
Thank you. Thank you to both organizations. Thank you.
And then we have one more. And it's not that one is more important than the other, but this one means a whole lot to me. And this one is to Allison Cochran. Allison, jump on up here, please. There is no way that we could do what we're doing without Allison and the Health Department. And I don't know anyone in Swain County who has carried a load like Allison has carried. And so if there is a friend of our school system, it's this lady right here. So I can tell you how much I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that's not just for you. That's for your whole family.
So normally, this would be the part in our meeting... Usually, we are able to start out, and we recognize our staff and students for doing wonderful things. But in the year of the pandemic, we're not able to do that. So after we finish that, it's when I look at all of those who aren't school employees and say, now's your time to run. You're welcome, the folks from Zito Media. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but please don't feel like you have to. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Be safe. Thank you so much.
And now, we want Allison to come and to give us a little breakdown of where we are or where we've come to in the past couple of weeks, please.
Each of you should have the handouts. If you look at North Carolina, if you look across the board about the positivity rate and the fatality rate, it has roughly stayed about the same since August. So that's just important to note that. In Swain County, we've tested 6,441 individuals. 332 are positive. We have 19 active cases currently. We've had five fatalities or deceased. Positive rate right now is 5.2%. Case fatality is 1.5%. With that, in the past month, since October the 8th, we've had 146 positives. So a lot of our numbers have really came this past month. So you can look at that, and it's broke down by zip code. Branson area has 95, has had 95. Cherokee area is 216. Whittier, 17. Dills Gap, 1. And looks around Topton is about 3. Just looking at that with the population about 14,000, if there was only... If you were only tested one time and it was positive, the rate of that is 2.3% for Swain County. So that's not on there as there's something I did. So... And some people tested positive, and then they got tested again and tested positive for work and that and another. But if it was just one time, it's 2.3% for Swain County, all of Swain County. On the back is the breakdown from the other counties in the area. Graham County, let's see, they have 22 active positive cases. Macon County has 42. Clay has 26. Cherokee County has 43. Jackson has 72 active cases. Did learn this evening that both Clay and Cherokee, I believe, have another fatality in each county this evening to report. And then it is the three graphs that I normally present, comparison of 1026 and 1109 for the number per age. So if you look at that, 0 to 17, on 1026, there was 42. As of today, there was 47.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. And I don't know that necessarily... You might not feel like now's the time to address it. But my understanding, and I've been working the COVID hotline in Cherokee, so I get a lot of information fed in from those sources. My understanding is that if you test positive and you go through your course and you then become asympt... You clear your symptoms. If you present for another test too soon after that, you likely are going to test positive again. So is that something... Are you all making any recommendations for people to wait on coming for a second test? Or just based...
We don't recommend retesting.
You do not recommend retesting?
We do not. As long as your 10 days is up and your symptoms have improved, of course, you don't have a fever, your cough has improved, anything like that, as long as you're showing improvements, we do not recommend retesting. Now, some employers are mandating, like a nursing home, assisted living, of course. You do have to be retested for that. And we would encourage on that because we're taking care of patients.
But routinely, and I guess that's the point I was just trying to help maybe get out into the community. Routinely, retesting at this point is not recommended.
No, it is not recommended by the state either.
Unless it's a job requirement of some sort. Okay. But just know that there's a chance that you're gonna test positive even though your symptoms have cleared.
Yes, that is true.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions or concerns?
I'm still comfortable with still going as it is.
Yes.
I told her when I came in, I was looking forward to the day I didn't see you. Not to take that wrong. She said, I looked forward not seeing you.
So she probably amen'd that.
I kinda did.
Yeah. We understand, and we won't take that personally at all.
But she's been really important to her decision.
Absolutely.
Very important. We couldn't have done it without her, and we appreciate that so much.
Thank you. I think last time I reported about Medisys, about the numbers that we had came through, and I applied for a grant. Just to let you know, I did receive the grant for a second Medisys, so we'll have that in the spring. I can't remember if I... Where I was at on that timeline with you guys. But we did receive the funding.
Wonderful. That's great. That's great. Shows you that you're still doing many other things.
Many other things. Nothing has stopped.
Nothing else has stopped, has it? Yeah. Thank you.
Welcome.
As far as the school system is concerned, I try to keep you all updated weekly on what our numbers are. Nothing has really changed since last Friday, when we had about 15 students who had either been in close contact or been around someone for more than 15 minutes within six feet. We did have one student who reported today of having that particular close contact. And it might not even be close contact. It might just be in that vicinity. And then we had a staff member who stayed out today because of another family member. So our numbers in the school system are really staying consistent. And I really... I want to draw attention to the fact that throughout the entire semester since August the 17th, when we started, we have only had six staff members who have tested positive in 20 students.
Wow.
And if you think about all the days and all the students that have come through our school system on a daily basis, I think that's a really significant statement. And we've been able to deal with that very quickly and take everyone out of harm's way, or keep them out of harm's way very quickly on that. It's just another testament to the fact that the precautions that are in place are working for us.
I said a lot that you and your staff and all the students, they... I think they did a fantastic job of making sure their kids are safe and that they're safe.
Yeah, we're doubling down on everything we can, the social distancing and everything along those lines. If you walk into our cafeterias after lunch is served, when the ladies or the gentlemen are there who are working, you'll find them sitting more than six feet apart and making sure that they don't have close contact because they know how serious that is now.
That's wonderful.
So I've been really pleased with that. Y'all have any questions about anything we're doing or any thoughts? Well, I've asked Neil Blankenship to come and to talk to us about athletics because games start Monday. Okay? And there are some pieces that come along with that that everybody needs to understand. And then when he gets done, Toby's gonna talk about what we're gonna do as a school system to help take care of those that can't come to games because there's more of those than we'll be able to attend. Okay?
All right, I'll start with the away games first because it's the easiest, of course. Right now, there are no fans on the road games for us. It's just home crowd only, and it's 25 people. The good thing is, is we did find out that our players don't count. So we had a conference meeting the other day. And so what we've done is, is one side of the gym will be for the fans, the 25 fans. The players will stay away from them on the other side, and they'll have their own spot, and they'll have a place to where they can have social distance when they're not playing and not involved. And it's gonna be a little different because most time, parents go, they bring them back, and now they're not gonna be able to go. So that's gonna be a hard thing to do now because we've never had to face this before. So I think that's gonna be the biggest adjustments for the parents part of it. I think the kids, they can adjust anything. The parents will probably have a tougher time with that. So with volleyball, we'll travel 22 on a bus. We're gonna have to work it out to where we'll be able to get our JV, middle school, and varsity on two buses, I think, with our numbers where they're at. So with them sitting one person to a seat with a mask on during that time. So that's the way that'll work there. And then we are talking to parents about helping pack lunches or something for them to eat because a middle schooler's gonna play at 4 o'clock, and then they're gonna have to sit there all night until that varsity game is over. And then they'll get on the bus and come home. You know, so that's where we're at with that right now with the away games. Okay? For the fans inside, they'll have to wear a mask.
Are you just gonna...
Yes.
I'm sorry. The food, are you asking parents to just do it for their own child or kind of...
They're in the cafeteria maybe to help us with that. Yeah, so we're trying to find ways to do that. We've been in contact with her to see if we could pull that off with them. But we need to be able to give them something to do that.
Absolutely.
So the middle school kids, will they, after their game, will they be able to stay in the gym or they have to leave?
No, they're gonna stay in the gym. They'll have the opposite side to sit, in which they'll be six feet apart. They can work on their homework while they're there, or they'll be able to do... Now, we also working with our conference, and it's gonna be... A lot of it depends on internet issues or whatever, to be able to try to get a feed from an away game back to our room devil network. We don't have all the answers yet for it, but we are trying. And some schools may be able to pull it off with their internet. Some schools may not, but we may not be able to pull it off. But our goal is to get it recorded and maybe to be able to get it up by the next day. So at least it does get on there. And Coach Verl will go into that, but we had talked with our conference today about doing that. They're trying to find ways to get it up too, to make a little money like we are. But we also don't want to take away from our visiting fans and not be able to let their parents watch if they can watch. So I don't know if all schools will do middle school and everybody, but we're gonna try. And we don't know the answer to that. We're working on it this week, try to get that done. Fans in the gym, yes.
Could middle school parents come and pick up their kids without coming in the gym?
Yes, they can.
And that way, the kids wouldn't have to stay there the whole time?
Yes. Yeah, if they want to, they can.
Okay, all right.
Fans in the gym must wear a mask at all times. If they come in with somebody, then they can sit with that person because they know them, but they still have to keep their mask on. They will have to have space, and just like you do anywhere you go. But they'll be able to do that with 25 fans at a time, but they have to wear a mask. We will, in the indoor sports, check their temperature when they come in and ask them a couple of questions, just like we do when they come into school. The outdoor sports, that's gonna be a little harder because there's more people. But we are in the indoor because they're closer together that way. So we feel like, as a conference, we voted to check temperatures when they come in the door because they'll have closer contact with everybody. The fans will sit on the opposite sides of the players. We went over that. Coaches and players on the bench must have a mask on. Okay? And we've started something new this week. It's probably gonna go into vote coming up. But with our kids even in practice now, starting next week, we even started with our volleyball players. When they started this week, we went ahead and went with it. They have to have a mask on them. And when they're active, used to when they were active, they didn't have it on them because we didn't... So we're encouraging them to go this route. So as soon as they stop, and if we start discussing, then it'll go up. And that way, we can kind of keep them in more of a mask more of time. And because what happens usually, once they went to practice, they got on the floor, well, they didn't have their mask because they didn't have it. You know, because they were going active, they didn't have to wear them. But then all of a sudden, the coach starts talking and starts coaching, then we need to bring them up. So we've put that rule into play, and it'll probably be a statewide rule by next week. But we went ahead and implemented it last week to just try to help us with that, with the spread. Visiting teams will check their players before they get on the bus. Okay? That'll be their job to check their own players. We'll check our own players. We'll bring them in a different door than our fans. Visiting teams must bring their own warm-up balls. Okay? So we're not trading off there while we're warming up. Home teamers are responsible for cleaning the game balls. Anytime, not every dead ball, but after each set or game, or if there's a timeout, or if a ball goes in the stands, we'll roll a new ball out if there's a dead time and clean that one and have another one ready to go. That's a state rule. There's only three essential people allowed at the scores table, a home book, a libero tracker, and a clock operator. That's the only three people allowed at the home book. Gyms will not open for teams until 3:30. That gives us time to clean the gym after school and get it ready to go for the... Before anybody comes in, because usually, some people got there beforehand. So we've decided not to allow any kids in until 3:30, until we get it cleaned. Gyms will be cleaned in between matches with teams warming up. So what'll happen with middle school, they're gonna get 25 tickets. We got 25 tickets. Basically, I'm gonna give two to each person. Lucky enough, with our middle school, we probably got too many kids, but me and Sony don't count. So we've got enough people on the team that they don't count. So we'll be able to do that. So we'll give two tickets out. They will have to buy those two tickets before our home game. So I will go by middle school. I will go by their practice, say, if you want to pay for your two tickets, I need that money. Okay? Because if they don't pay for them, then I can give them, get them to somebody else. So they will pay then. I will give them two tickets with their names on them. So we won't be exchanging money right now at the gate. It'll be exchanged beforehand. They'll bring those two tickets with their name on them, the player's name on them. That's their two people in. When that game is over, they will go out our side door in our gym, go out the side. We'll bring the... We'll shut the door down. We'll clean the bathrooms, disinfect the bleachers while the teams are warming up, get the other fans in during that time. And that'll go on three times. Okay? So it's gonna take quite a crew to pull this off. It's every time you get something situated, you figure out there's something else. And I'm sure the first game, we're gonna figure out something else. So... But that's how it's gonna... That's how the plan is right now. Essential personnel traveling, we're allowed right now, six people for essential personnel to travel with our team. One is a game day administrator in a separate vehicle in case somebody gets sick. We don't want to put them on a bus. So we're gonna have somebody to bring them back home. Our athletic trainer, if she wants to go, or if their athletic trainer wants to go. A scorekeeper to sit on the bench because they're not essential at home, but we'll... We want to keep stats, so we can travel a scorekeeper. A filmer, if we want to film the game, and our line judges, and of course, our bus driver. And each school will report who those people are so that when so-and-so comes here, I've got their names here. That's how they check in to me if they're workers. Those people are not allowed to intermingle with our fans. They have to stay with the athletes and the coaches on the other side. That's where they'll be. Okay? Let's see. Got that one. Got that one. Only one person per team filling up the water bottles. We gotta have a person to fill up the water bottles. We can't have... We'll supply the water. They bring their own water bottles. They're used to this already. But we can't have each athlete going over and getting their own. So when it's time to fill up, we'll have to have a person for that, to help take care of that. Warmups, you don't need to know about that. Teams will go dressed. They will have a locker room open for them to use as a restroom, but we are going dressed to the games. So we're not... Because some of the locker rooms, they're so small, it would take us forever to change in and out of. But they will be open, and in some schools are not even opening their locker rooms. But a lot of schools want to keep the athletes and the fans separate, so we are... That's why we're opening our locker rooms, to give them that spot. Any questions about volleyball before I move on to cross country? All right. Cross country, we'll be running our cross-country meets at Katoa Fields. We met with the tribe. We got permission from them. Thanking them for letting us run there. We didn't have a place to run, and we needed more places. So they have let us run up there. It's gonna be a great spot to have a cross-country meet. So I think it'll work out great with that, but I appreciate them letting us do that. Start time, because our teacher workday ends early on Wednesday. It's 2 o'clock. And the reason we're having to start a little earlier is because daylight savings time, and we're trying to get middle school and high school all in. So we bumped the time up to 2 o'clock with that. And the state has said that's okay because our workday's over by then on Wednesday. So that helped us out there. Right now, we haven't decided on fans yet, whether visiting fans can travel. And the reason we're in dilemma is this. Some counties are saying no. Some counties are saying yes. But our dilemma is not all schools have a cross-country course. So if I tell them they can't have them, those parents will go all year and not be able to watch their kid run. So we're trying to figure out the best way to do that. It's 100 fans outside, and what we would ask is the same thing. We'd give them so many tickets depending on what we decide to do. Once their child is done, then they would be off campus. They would have to exit and leave. And that would just keep them that way. The athletes and the fans, once again, will have spots for them. They are separate from the fans. And there is no gathering around the finish line or the start line to try to keep those things separate. Athletes, once again, they will have their mask on when they're warming up. But once they start running, they pull it down. As soon as they cross the finish line, it's to go up. That's a state rule there. But we're still in the mix of trying to figure out what we're gonna do there. As far as fans there, we're gonna meet again this week, and I'll let Mr. Sell know what we're gonna do. Because that's gonna be a different bear to try to figure out how to get fans in and out of there at some of these places where we run. So that's what we're dealing with. I did have to get, I think, Brian Cuckston. He is gonna give us a wildlife person because if you've ever been to Katoa Fields, they like to show up in the evening.
Yep, they do.
And so that's another obstacle we're having to deal with. So we don't want to have to mess with that. Any questions?
Staggered starts at cross-country?
They're not staggered starts. They're in a group, and they're kind of fanned. We try to have a wide-open area for them to do the way they do it. But they didn't say... Because there's just seven, and there's only four teams. And so it's only 28 people coming there. So... And not everybody has a full team of seven anyway. So we're usually pretty good on that. I would say our biggest issue right now is the fans. You know, we're trying to get everybody in. We want to get everybody in, but it's gonna be tough.
So our kids don't practice at Cherokee. They just... Our meets will be at Cherokee?
Well, they're at Katoa Fields, Old Ferguson Fields.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we go there to practice some. But they've let us use that place. And I've sent out a letter to all the schools and the coaches about the significance of that place and make sure we're taking care of it and keep people off the burial ground and stuff like that. So we've already sent that out and taken care of that. So...
And Neil has... Or is in the process of preparing a number of volunteers to be there to make sure that the grounds are respected and that the fans do what they're supposed to. It's gonna take an enormous number of volunteers this year to make that happen. I mean, we're thinking... You're thinking 20 to 25.
It'll take probably at least 20 at the cross-country meets, and I don't know how many it's gonna take at the volleyball. I'm still working on that. It's a... I mean, like concession stand, we're gonna open concession stand, but it's gonna be basically just drinks and candy. And that's just to try to make a buck here and there, to try to get us some money going somehow or another. But it's... We're not gonna make a lot. We're not gonna do the regular food or anything like that right now. We're just not in a place to do that yet. So...
Other question?
And I'm happy to volunteer.
Okay.
Let me know.
Okay.
What we can do. I'll volunteer Danny, too. He loves it when I do that.
We don't have a booster club right now, so he's kind of got out. So our booster club is, you're looking at him. So we kind of went that route.
My opinion, where you know.
Okay. Okay. And I appreciate y'all, and I'm sure we'll be back sometime and see what happens. But things are going well. We're, we're continuing workouts, practices are going well. I think the kids are excited about getting to start something. The hard part is, is the kids can't come watch their teammates play, and that's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that's gonna be our biggest adjustment right now, so.
It's also gonna be hard on some families.
Yes.
Absolutely.
You know, I was, was at church last night when a grandfather was there, and he understands that we're under restrictions that are outside of our control, but he still said, "But it still hurts." And what he meant was, he's not gonna get to see his granddaughter play.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
We're gonna try and fix that the best that we can. So Toby, come and tell us about our amazing, wonderful video opportunity that is better, and I'm not just bragging and exaggerating. We have a better opportunity in Swain County because of Toby and Joe Holt than any other school system, and I hope that they're all listening to me right now.
Well, we appreciate that. Couple things about Coach Blankenship and what they've done so far that I wanna make sure you understand, is that every decision that he's made so far has been in lockstep with our administration, as well as North Carolina High School Athletic Association, the Smoky Mountain Conference, and Allison. So he's done his homework. He's, this plan is not piecemeal. It's one that I feel quite confident you can defend with confidence if you have to, that he's done his fair share of homework to be. It's fair and equitable to parents, but yet give our kids every opportunity to, to play sports that they enjoy thoroughly, so. Kudos to him for that. And he and I are going tomorrow to walk these venues and check 'em out and see what signage we need, how many volunteers, those type of things. We'll continue to work on that through the week. As far as Maroon Devils Network is concerned, since its inception, our whole goal has been to publicize Swain County High School athletes and to broadcast as many events as we can possibly broadcast. It started years ago as only a football venture, and it has since morphed into everything, and we intend to keep it that way. Our intention this year is to expand it, every how many hours we can expand it up until Joe's 40 runs out. That's what we're gonna be restricted by, is, is what we can do with Joe. He's invaluable to our process because he knows the whole process front to back, and without him, I don't know that we could pull it off. We may end up having to try, but I don't know that we can. And it's gonna increase because we will officially tell you tonight that we have every intention of doing middle school and JV volleyball games, as well as varsity games. We've not done that in the past. It spreads us very, very thin. So for middle school and JV, there won't be announcers, we'll just have the video for people to watch. And then varsity will pick up with announcers and do that just a little bit more, because we want them to have something to look forward to when they're in seventh grade. We are going to offer that service for $30 for a month, and it'll be $30 each month for the remainder of the year, or until we see fit that we can make ends meet athletically. All of that money, and we get about $21 out of that 29 from YouTube. So that's a pretty good return compared to what Pixalot offers, which is what Cherokee County and a couple of others are gonna go with. They're not gonna get near the return we get. As a matter of fact, it's probably gonna be flip-flopped by the time it's over with. They're gonna get about that $8 and lose out on 20-some, and so we gain in that regard. And it's important for our folks at home to know that we're not gouging, we're not trying to take unfair advantage, but he's got bills to pay, and if it benefits the kids, that's what we're gonna do. And this benefits the kids. It'll allow him to pay for officials, allow him to pay for necessary equipment to be able to keep sports going, and that's important to us. So we're gonna bite the bullet and do everything we can to make that happen. And again, it's gonna be difficult, because the first week, we've got three home events. And that's gonna be tough. We're gonna do cross-country as well. We've never done cross-country fully before, but we feel like we've got the equipment now, and the manpower, and where we're running at, that we can take advantage of doing that. And it's one of those sports, it's important for our folks to understand that while it's not gonna be live, because that would be very hard to pull off, it will be shown as soon as Joe can edit it and get it back up for those premium viewers. The stuff that we've done in the past that were free, it will still be this meeting. They'll be able to get this meeting, they'll be able to get things that we do around school, Mr. Sale's weekly messages, still be able to get those without paying that premium, but to be able to get live sports and be able to get sports, they're gonna have to pay that premium. And that again is because that goes to athletics, not us. So it's important for me to continue to say that, because I know some people are gonna say we're trying to take unfair advantage, and boy, that's a lot to pay. But if you think about it, it's really not, because if you go to one volleyball game, one volleyball match or other, you take your entire family, you're gonna spend close to $30 by the time you're said and done, for, that's just for one. And so you're gonna get more than that throughout the month over that 30-day period. We're gonna roll that into the next season and just keep right on going with it as much as we can go. I'm not gonna lie to you, we've not even thought about how we're gonna pull spring off yet. And I know he hasn't either, because it's gonna be awful in terms of what stuff's going on, so we've not even thought about how we're gonna pull that off yet. And, but we're committed to trying to do it. And that's our commitment to y'all, is that we're gonna do our very best to bring as much athletics as we can to our folks at home, because our kids deserve that, and that's what we're in it for. And our first and foremost priority is to do the best quality broadcast we can do for the kids.
Where will the sign-ups be to subscribe?
They are already going online. You can go to YouTube, you have to create an account. And once you've created that account, there's an option there, two buttons, I believe. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two buttons there. One says join, one says subscribe. You subscribe, you get all the news that comes from the maroondevils.com network in print into your mailbox, your email box every day, which that'll be back up and going again. And if you click join, then you're a part, a subscriber in, in terms of being a part of this network that we're making, and you will get to watch live events when they come up.
All of that is at the Maroon Devil Network on YouTube.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And there's a Facebook posting today that explains those steps, so people can refer to that if they need to. And we'll be putting those out as we go along through the week. Mr. Sale even did a, one of his, last week's superintendent message to that effect, telling people how they could subscribe and, and join the network. So I hope we got the word out. It may be a little slow in coming, because, you know, it's gonna slip up on us that we're actually get to do sports again. But we, we hope we have influx in that, because that means we're serving our community, number one, and we're helping out athletics, number two, we're giving a venue for our kids, and those are very important goals for us. Did I leave anything out, Joe?
How much are those tickets on home games?
I don't know.
And that's two per parent?
Two per parent.
Or?
Two per athlete.
Two per athlete. Two per athlete. So if I tell my daughter that it's go to grandparents rather than parents?
She'll never know the difference. She'll never know.
That's a good plan, that's a good plan.
And I should add, too, I happened to think of this when you said that, is that, again, our commitment is to cover as much as we can, and because of the conference agreement last week of being able to film, that has always restricted us. It's kind of felt like they're picking on us, to be honest with you. We've offered revenue sharing with them before, we've done everything we can to jump through the hoops to please Murphy and Robbinsville, and we can't please them. But their continual debate is that we're gonna keep people out of the stands, they can only get 25, so exactly how many people can we keep out? And so they've agreed that we can do away games. So that means that we will do a full slate of away games as well, but again, we're gonna be constrained by how many hours Joe has within the course of a month and a week. So we, we're gonna do the best we can to bring all those to you. It certainly means that we'll have a full slate when fall rolls around, football rolls around in the spring, to be able to do those as we've done in the past, unencumbered this time, thankfully, by our good friends at Robbinsville and Murphy, who like to gouge just as hard as they can. But we are committed to doing those, and I hope, I hope everyone can appreciate how difficult it's gonna be to be able to get all of it done, but we're gonna do our best.
So am I understanding this correctly, in that the expectation is that Mr. Holt has to be present for everything that is being filmed?
At home.
At home.
Yeah, for the most part, that's, that's the, that's the ticket, and that means that we're not gonna see him around the office a whole lot. He's gonna work his hours from 4:00 to 10:00.
And I have no problem with that, I'm just wondering if, you know, like, we need to clone him and get another one.
Well, if we could do that, that'd be great. I'd appreciate that. It'd make life a lot easier for us.
And so then the away games, those schools would feed back into our feed, or we don't know yet?
That was our hope, but I don't think that's what's gonna happen in talking to him, in talking to them, it seemed pretty rudimentary on their end. I think they're gonna do some Facebook live streams, hold the phone up the whole time type deals when they're at visitors, but we're, we were more than happy to make available our stream to them if we can do that. We'll send them a package deal at the end, so they can give it to the parents if they want to. We'll help them any way we can, and we've offered that. And when, when we go, we, we're intent on doing the same quality that we would be able to do at home where at all possible. We're not gonna do a Facebook live broadcast that's sanctioned by us, because that's, that's not what we do. We're gonna do the best we can, and that means that Joe and I will be going and we'll be doing what we can. We, we got some new camera equipment late last week, and Joe and Brandon Messer have been playing with it today, and I think they've made some inroads with it. But it's similar to what you guys are using here tonight, where you can do some joystick controlling and maybe not have to be present at that particular event, just the camera be there to pull some of that off, is what we're hoping for.
Oh, wow, that's impressive.
That will help out a great deal if we can get that done. And, and I should say, too, that in the past, you know, we've had great success with interns at the high school, being able to work with us and get some experience, but we do not currently have any. We've, we've shook the trees as best we can, and we can't get any. But that notwithstanding, we're still committed to doing the best possible job we can.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And we're still a go as far as athletic activity buses go. We're good on that point.
Good.
Bring that back to you tonight, in case you had questions. All five of ours have been road-driven since last year. They, they got them out a couple of weeks ago and got them on the highways a little bit and rode them around and make sure there weren't any problems. We've got bus seat counts in those that we're gonna match up with what he gives us in terms of teams and their traveling group, and, and we'll be able to take care of that. Where we can't, we'll, we'll just do what we have to do in terms of contacting the boys' club or whatever we have to do to get kids where they need to go. That's our, again, our commitment from the garage, is to get our kids there safely and
Thank you all.
Thank you.
In your pack somewhere, there should be a calendar for the week of December the 14th. And the reason that I've shared that with you is to show you that we've made some changes. And the reason, well, I guess I couldn't, can't say we made some changes, because on the original calendar, there was nothing that we had put on those dates. Because that's the test week normally, okay? And the only testing that the school systems have to worry about right now are end-of-course tests from the state. However, there is a statement in our, in our board policy and some other places that talk about finals and those being counted as part of a grade, okay? And so our high school has committed to also using a teacher-made final of some sort for all classes, so that those Algebra, I believe it's Algebra II, and, I mean, Math I, Math II, and English II, Biology, so that those end-of-course tests are not the only ones that are being counted in grades. That's for an equity piece, okay? And so we've constructed a calendar for that last week that will have only the students at the high school that are being tested on those days come to the school, all right? The other students will be having remote learning on those days. The only day that there is somewhat of a difference, well, I guess there may be two, but one of the differences is that Wednesday, December the 16th, because we have students that are remote Plan C, that will also have to take final exams. That will be the day that all of those exams will be given for all of those remote students. And Sonya and her team have a, a plan figured out about how to make that work, all right? We will not be able to provide transportation for those students. We don't have enough seats on the buses to do that, all right? So those students and their parents are going to have to bring them or drive to the high school and take tests on that Wednesday, okay? The only other day that is different is going to be that Friday. And that's because you are supposed to have a makeup test day for any students that are not able to be there on their regular schedule. That Friday is the makeup day. All of the makeup tests should be finished by noon. And because of that, I'm going to turn loose all of our staff at noon across the entire county, okay? Now, there's one other piece that everyone needs to understand, and that is, on that Friday, it will be a mandated workday for the elementary schools and the middle school and the preschool. That means those students won't be at school on that Friday. The only people who will be at school on that Friday will be the students who need to make up tests. And we will run regular bus routes on that day to make sure they have transportation. We can do that, all right? Now, we are going to publish this on our, our web pages, Facebook pages, whatever we have, all our social media, so that everyone can begin planning for that week, because it's going to be a little bit different. But this is the best way, and just about the only way, we can get all of those final exams in like we need to, and make sure that we have enough buses to cover everyone, enough seats on the buses, and everyone is still safe and secure. Does that make sense? Now, are there any questions about that, any of that? It's, it's fairly complex, and I'll do my best to answer it. Okay? All right. I wanted to bring that to you as a point of information. And let's not even begin to talk about next semester yet, okay? Not yet. We were, we are gathering data now on who may, if we can, if there is any way that we can bring students, more students back into the building. We're, we're gathering data on who might want to come back and who doesn't, but the principals are in the middle of that gathering process, so it's best that we don't even talk about it yet, so that people don't get hopes up or dreams dashed, okay? It's just, it's really complicated right now, though, okay? Your next meeting is on November the 30th. It will be the last meeting for Ms. Burns and for Mr. Wilson. Therefore, you can plan for a four-hour meeting that night.
Well, we can just get it in my face.
I have yet in my life, I've known Lambert for, my goodness, and I have yet to say anything that he doesn't have a comeback for.
Have a comeback for, yeah.
Ever, ever, ever. He's one of the quickest wits I've ever been around. On that night, you'll have the counseling clan and some personnel issues as well. Now, following that, I have scheduled, I asked Chris Campbell and his firm to pencil in two dates for us. So for Mr. McKinney and Mr. Hyatt, and for Ms. Carpenter, we're going to have board training on either December the 8th or on December the 9th. And I need for you all to look at your calendars at some point in the next 24 hours and tell me which of those days are best for you, okay? I've already made contact with our two new board members, and both of those dates look good for them. They have both said they would prefer the 9th, which is a Wednesday, but we, we can work it any way that you want. The purpose of that will be Title IX instruction, because it's been changed around and there's a lot more procedural pieces that we have to think about. That will start at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. It'll last until 3:00. We'll take a break, and then from 3:00 until 6:00, Chris Campbell or one of his firm will give us board training on rights, responsibilities, and ethics, which is something that every board member is supposed to have training in every single year. So that will run from 3:00 to 6:00, and then I'll provide dinner for you after that, okay?
We'll be there for dinner.
Okay, you come for dinner. You're welcome to. Stephanie will be cooking. Stephanie will be cooking. No, I'm just kidding. She says Pizza Hut, here we come, okay? So y'all let me know if you can on the 8th and 9th. If you can't either one of those, because you're, I understand, we'll find a different way to get you your three hours in, in the year, okay?
I've got mediation, the 8th and mediation.
Okay, so just tell them to mediate themselves and come on, all right? We need to, we need to get together, especially with our new members. No, it's okay. Those are the only days that we can get right now, okay? It's okay. December the 14th is the next official meeting after the 30th. That will be the installation of our new board members and selection of chair. You see all those pieces there, okay? The other piece that we have tonight is Ms. Treadway is going to talk to us about the budget and some budget amendments, or the finance report.
We just get a budget and I already have amendments, so. I really just wanted to give you a, a board report, just because since we have passed the budget, you can actually see a budget to actual as of October 31st. The first one-pager, if you'll just look at that, that is the budget to actual by the two-digit purpose code, which is how you pass the budget. There's, at this point, we should be about a third of the way into our school year, and as you can tell, we're right about a third of, of our spending, so we're right in line with our budget. There's one outlier in the 6,200 purpose code, and that is, basically, we have a memorandum of agreement with DPI, and we do employ a consultant for this region for DPI, and those funds come through our federal funds, and we have not received our allotment yet, so therefore I haven't been able to do a budget yet for that. But we still have to continue to pay the person, so. So that's our one outlier. As soon as we get our allotment, which they promised it'll be this month, I'll get a budget amendment in for that. The other report is the budget to actual by program, and I just give that to you for your information, and I have explanations out there if there are any outliers. Most of them are for guaranteed allotments, others are for funds that we have received and that I'll have in the amendments before you, so. On the budget amendments for the state, mainly those are for additional allotments. We received some additional COVID funds for EC of $9,427. We received some COVID funds for personal protective equipment in the amount of $35,731. We just received those funds, have to have them spent by the end of December, just saying. And then we finally received our allotment for this school business system modernization, so that's for our new finance software, and so those, that's $172,830. So that's the majority of those amendments for state. The others are just making some tweaks between the purpose codes, just for some, to realign some of those purpose codes. There were no amendments for federal and no amendments for local current expense or for capital. The next one is child nutrition, and we had a $20,000 increase on their budget just for a correction. We had budgeted some funds for bonuses, but that was actually back in the summer, and so they're actually doing a, a bonus this month for their employees, and so we had to budget that additional 20,000. On special revenue, most of that was just reallocation in between purpose codes, but we did also have to budget for an additional teacher assistant at West for a one-on-one. Anytime we have a need for a one-on-one, we have to provide a, an additional assistant, and that's, that's for that position. And that's it for the budget amendments. Do y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all of the discussion items that we have tonight, unless you have anything else, Ms. Burns.
I do not.
Then that moves us into our action. And I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the meetings of the October 12th, 2020 open session, and the October 26th, 2020 special called meeting. You should have those documents in front of you.
Do you have a motion?
Somebody.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as they were presented by Ms. Treadway and written before you.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous.
For personnel, I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education employ Taylor Dodge as the Gear Up Coordinator effective December the 14th, 2020, pending her background check.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to have Taylor Dodge.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education employ Daniel Childers as a 28-hour custodian at Swain West Elementary effective November 10th, 2020.
Do you have a motion?
Somebody.
And a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussions?
Do we, all of you getting background checks?
Yes, I should have said that, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. and Ms. McKinney.
Do we have a motion and a second? Yeah, okay. All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
These are the, the next names are the ones that are hot off the press today, okay? I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education employ Chloe S. Reagan as a teacher assistant for virtual instruction at the high school effective 11/24/2020, pending her background check.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. That was unanimous.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education employ Cheryl Green as a teacher assistant in virtual instruction at the middle school effective November 16, 2020, pending her background check.
Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous.
These next two are, are for our reading assistants. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Rachel L. Douthat as a teacher assistant at West effective 11/23/2020, pending her background check.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. That was unanimous.
And I am, I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education employ Katie Walls as a teacher assistant at East Elementary starting November 23rd, 2020, pending her background check.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous.
If you'll notice at the bottom of your spreadsheet there, there are two names, Ed Zelenka and Carol Seikinen?
C.A.
C.A., what he said, okay? And they are being moved from part-time positions to full-time.
Great.
Doesn't require approval, but does require your knowledge, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Those are all of the personnel items that we have. Mr. Do, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. There are some for-year informations that you have listed there, holidays, November the 11th, which is this Wednesday, and then I believe the 26th and 27th are Thanksgiving. And there is an optional teacher workday right before Thanksgiving for November the 25th. Other than that, that's the, that's the agenda, other than going into closed session for the purpose of talking about some legal issues and some personnel.
Do we have anyone sign up for public comment? I mean, assuming we don't, because nobody's here, just making sure, thank you.
There will be no action taken after that closed session, so you can dismiss the closed session, or you can dismiss the entire board meeting from that point if you want to.
From then or now?
From closed session.
From closed session.
We need to go to closed session first, and then you can adjourn the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Okay?
Okay, well, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Pursuant under?
Pursuant, is that on there?
It is, it's right there.
Down towards the bottom.
Well, I'm not seeing it. Oh, I'm in the wrong page. I'm on the confidential board. I move the Swain County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not in public record under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll go into closed session. Thank you all for being here.
He's going to stay here.
Thank you, Joe, thank you for everything, my goodness.
Yeah.